So if anything changes tonight, it has to be a four to nothing vote.
You've got nobody to ask for.
What'd you just say?
All right, I'd like to call the February 3rd, 2011 Town Council Budget Wrap-Up Meeting to order. Where we left off last meeting, Town Administrator had made changes based on what we had suggested as a zero increase in the budget. Then we also made a few changes to that proposal based on input from Council of La Branch mainly. And tonight, we want to try to finalize that. We'll start with the finance. In the finance section of the budget, there was money for a potential new hire to replace one that has retired. Anything that has changed, so I'll leave that. Ed, would you want to explain that to us, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, within the budget, if everybody recollects, Evelyn Abbott, who had worked for the town many years, retired. And we had put money in the budget for the purposes of potentially filling the position with a new employee. One of the current staff members stepped forward, was willing to undertake the work. In addition, she does water and sewer. She's a water and sewer clerk. We recently started paying all of our bills opposite the bi-weekly wages. So one week we pay payables, and the following week we have payroll. So we're hanging on to our money a little bit more, and it made it much easier for us to utilize the services of Sue Landell, who's in that position. She is going to be working 25 hours a week in order to accomplish that, still be responsible for water and sewer in addition to payables. So I asked Mr. Parnell if he would go back into the budget and the wages that were set aside for that part-time employee, if he would make whatever adjustments we needed to make, given the increase in the hours. So that way, we could return the balance of the dollars back that the council could use towards reducing the overall budget. And that is what we did, and the total reduction comes to $9,592, if I'm correct.
So that's on page two of the handout we received tonight?
That is correct.
Right. And so that is Sue going from how many hours a week?
She was, she's currently 20 hours, and as of next week, she'll be going to 25 hours per week.
So it's just five extra hours a week?
Yes.
Okay. Wow.
And the way that the funds will be allocated, it will be 25% in water, 25% in sewer, and 50% in the finance department.
Okay. Don, does this, you're comfortable that this doesn't put you at jeopardy as far as any future audits, as far as separation of workload? I know that was an issue a couple of years ago.
No, as far as the, as far as the separation, it's still there.
Okay.
It's just one person's doing more than one job, but they will all separate anyway, so it just doesn't matter.
So you're okay with it?
Yep.
Okay. Any councils have any comments on this particular item?
I think it's just great that Don and Zay will come up with this plan and see if it works.
One of the things, too, is Sue, sort of a backup for everyone. So she had the basics for the job anyway, so it's a good fit.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great, a great way to save money for the town. I like it.
The reduction of one part-time person upstairs in finance.
Right, absolutely. All right, so I guess we understand that we're okay with that. The other item that I wanted to address was the vote we took to eliminate council wages for next year. In our package, again, is a legal opinion from Justin that basically says we probably shouldn't do that, we can't hold a future council to what we think. Council Bentley?
A couple of things on that. Number one, that night, and I should have either abstained or said nay, but I didn't want to be nay-nay say, when it got to me, it was three-nothing. And then the next morning, I woke up, I said, you know, that's tough, because even though we said we're not going to give an increase, a 2% increase to people, we didn't take money away from them. And what we did, in effect, is took money away from us. And 2% raise for someone making $35,000 is $700, and every bit counts. They're not going to get that 700. We didn't take 700 away from them, but we took 1,500 away from us. I don't know about any other counselors, I'm only speaking to myself. For 18 of the last 20 years, I've had a part-time job that helped pay the bills and helped with a tiny college fund for three kids. Whether it was plowing snow, or landscaping, or working in bars, I've had part-time jobs. So this is something that was kind of like my part-time job. It's a little bit of money, it helps pay. So number one, financially for myself. Number two, my fear is going forward, and it almost sounds like we can't bind people going forward anyway. But again, someone just starting out, or someone that, starting a career out, or someone that's retired, or someone that doesn't make a great salary, if this was the difference of getting paid something rather than nothing, we have four positions up, and certainly, I would hope and wish, I think we have a good council, and I wish all four would run, and all four would be back here, but there could be none of them back here. And if the difference between someone throwing their hat in the ring is, I just, you know, I'd like to do it, but I just can't do it for free, that scares me. There could be some people out there that are in that boat that will not do it because of the money factor. I don't think anyone does it for the money. It's like, it's like coaching high school sports. You don't do it for the money, you do it because you love sports, you love the kids. And I would hope no one's intentions were, I'm going to go there strictly to make money. But that's my, I regretted the next morning the way I voted, not anyone else, and everyone has their own opinion, and that's great. But I'm worried about future with other people coming in. And then one of Justin's comments, that once you say no, there could be a case where you never get to say it again. So when I'd asked that night, what happens next year, what will come back in? And now Justin's almost saying, well, no. So pretend that there's a council here that's here for two or three more terms, because you said it in 2011, back in January, you're never going to get it again. That scares me, too. So anyway, that's my take.
Not a problem. Council La Branch?
Couple of questions. I fully understand where Counsel Bentley's coming from, and I do agree with a lot of what he said. But if I may, Mr. Parnell, are we currently set up as counselors for pay periods based on the fiscal year? Is that the way it's set up now? It got changed a couple, about a year ago.
You'll find in the W-2s this year, because of the change, you'll have got a little bit more than you would anticipate.
Okay. So knowing that, which I had a thought that that was the case, but I wanted to be certain, what I'm thinking now is, it's not fair, as Counsel Bentley mentioned, there's potentially four counselors that are sitting up here that voted that evening, that may not even be on the council come June, July 1st. So my recommendation would be to go, as Justin has stated, is to allocate $1 for that line item, keeping it active, and let the council decide when they come on board in May. Let them have a say, vote if they want to continue with the stipend as-is, change the stipend to a lower level, or, you know, that would be my recommendation. You know, I'm going to be honest with you, and I understand where Counsel Bentley's coming from, because, yeah, it is nice to have that check show up every three months, if I'm not mistaken. Four months? Every four months?
Three.
It's nice to see that happen. But from my perspective, it boils down to pennies per hour for the amount of work. And, you know, I guess if we're trying to save someplace, that was an easy place for me to take a hit, and I'd be willing to personally take the hit next year, if the rest of the council didn't want to. But that was where I was coming from. It wasn't so much in a reference to the fact that 30-some people were not going to get to 2%, that really wasn't the driving force behind it. I had thought about doing it that evening strictly by myself, just simply saying that I will, knowing that I'm vested for at least another year here, that I would forego my salary to lower the rate. But I, at the last minute, I changed it for the whole amount. So I guess that's where I'm coming from, and I'd recommend the $1, and we can decide on it later.
Right, and I was going to offer something else. I was going to suggest that we put the money back in, and then when the new council comes, if they want to vote for a year not to accept it, to take the money, they can, or if somebody decides personally they don't want to do it, they can do it that way, which is pretty much the same thing you said, except it's putting the money back in, and then they have to vote not to take it. Counsel Bergeron, what have you to say?
I'd like to kind of echo what Counsel Bentley said, and I, too, felt differently about the vote the next day. And my term is up in May, so this does not affect me. But I did feel that...
Does that mean you're not going to run for reelection?
Well, that's, that may be the case. But, you know, this amount may make or break somebody's decision on whether to be on the council. I mean, it's $1,500 a year, but, you know, I am an hourly employee, and I know when I have to leave work, I lose time. It's a hassle, and we spend a lot of hours here, and it doesn't compensate us for the hours, not that we're here for that. But I think, you know, it does take a little bit of the pain out of it. I think it's kind of unfair for us to dictate what the future council is going to be getting for a salary. I think it's up to them to decide, not us. And that's in May. And I, too, agree that maybe we should put the money back and let them decide. And I don't know if it can be on a person-by-person voluntary basis, but, you know, if that person doesn't want their money and wants to give it back to town, so be it. And if somebody needs the money and it makes the difference, then I say they're entitled to it. They spend a lot, we spend a lot of hours on this, and, you know, I don't, maybe I don't need the money, but I feel it takes a little bit of the pain out of having to leave work constantly, and missing out on that hourly wage that I miss as well, so. At first, it sounded like a great idea, but I thought about it, and, you know, once again, it's not going to impact me, because this doesn't change till the next budget cycle, so, you know, I neither gain nor lose out of this. I'd like to see the money put back in, and the next council should decide something like that, not us.
And every council can decide that on a year-to-year basis, if they want. All right, so...
Well, do we know that, though?
Do we know what?
That they could, back to Counsel La Branch's thing, so say in May, there's seven people here, and it's four-three, either way, doesn't really matter. Four-three, saying we're not going to get it.
I think if somebody...
Why couldn't those four then just say, I want to forego it? Because you're still backing the same thing. Now you get someone...
I think if one person sits here and says, I want to get paid, that they have to get paid. I don't think the rest of the council...
And I'm just asking that. And that's part of what Justin's thing said, but...
Right. I think that every, basically, it's going to be up to every individual council to say, I want to forego being paid this year or not. But I think if one person sits here and says, I want to be paid, I don't think the rest of the council can say, you're not going to be paid. The way the chart is written, I don't think it can.
If you don't mind me interjecting, what if you have, out of seven councils, you have six well-to-do counselors, and you have one where that may pay his year electric bill, and he gets outvoted, well, you know, that's a bad thing for him.
That's why I was asking, right. That's what...
If I may, I think that the way that it should be handled is not so much that the council city are in vote as to whether they want or don't want to get their pay. You know, when a new council's members come on, you get information, we hand the person a W-2, they fill it out, and it's something anybody needs to know. Yeah, so it doesn't put anyone on the spot.
But it shows up in the, I mean, it's going to...
It shows up, but, but...
It shows up in the budget, so, I mean, but I understand what you're saying about putting councils on the spot or whatever, but I just think everybody should make their own decision. I think if two councils next year decide, I don't care if I get paid or not, and I don't want to get paid, fine, tell Don, don't cut me checks. And that's, I don't think you can force him to take the money either.
Exactly. Mike?
Basically, my thoughts are, you know, we either have to pull them on back in or do away with it. So I'll make a motion that we return the $11,000 to the town council wages for fiscal year 2012.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just one question. Now, we have a quorum, but do we need four votes to pass something, or just the majority rules?
Majority rules.
Okay, I just want to be sure of that.
That's the way it is.
We are short this evening, and I know that a lot of things stipulate on four votes being taken, or four votes being affirmed, so...
It's majority at this point.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes four to zero to put that money back in, and then in May, I guess the council can, the new council can decide what they want to do. So that does what to our budget now? Means our...
Well, I was just going to say, to give you some perspective, the amount that I reduced the budget was just a short amount, under $225,000, $249. The council went lower than that. With the changes and stuff that have happened in the finance, and adding back the dollars for the council, the general fund total would be $229,613 under the current year. So you vested it by $4,000.
So say that again, it's $229,000?
$2,613 less than the total amount of this year's budget, which is $6,815,141.
Right, okay. So it's $229,000 less than last year's budget?
Correct.
Is what the bottom line is? But that...
On the general fund side.
On the general fund side, right. But we're thinking that due to revenue changes, just to get everything on the table, that this will probably result in an increase of 20 cents on the tax rate? Is that what you talked about last time?
From what the figures that Don had, but I think that there are several things that are going to be happening in this current fiscal year that we know are going to be happening.
Okay.
Property that needs to be purchased, so we will, I think that in the end, we will definitely see on the town side a reduction in the tax rate.
Okay, good. Okay, now, one last thing, and then hopefully we can get out of here. Yes, but Al Zink had had questions about social service grants, and I see this on the memo. Unfortunately, he's not here. What would be the avenue if Counsel Zink were to look at these and say, you know, based on, for instance, what Durham gives for social service grants, I'd like to cut the social service grant portion of the budget, and the rest of the council agreed with that? Do we have an opportunity to do that, or is tonight the end of it?
No, because Counsel Zink is the council's rep. If the council agrees that they want additional cuts in that area, they can instruct them to bring that up at the budget meeting and make a motion, put it on the table for discussion.
Okay. Counsel Bergeron?
Mr. Winowski, I heard you earlier saying that some communities that you contacted use a formula system. Is that available to you, and are you aware of how they do that formula?
I'm not aware of how they set it up. I can easily just ask them to send it over to me. Basically, what they do is they wait the request based upon the number of individuals, whether they be children or adults, that utilize a service by a particular grant agency, and therefore, that fluctuates based upon whether there are more in one year or less in another year. So I can easily get that.
At the moment, if they send us a request, is that their only criteria for getting money? Do you base it on the fact that they do the service in town, and that they send you a request? Is that what happens?
The way that I've been during my tenure here, relative to social service grants, I have level funded them every single year, except in the last two years, any organization that is a, provides services basically directly to the town, such as the Link Together and Lamprey Healthcare, they have asked for a small increase. I provide it because they provide it directly to the kids or to residents within the community. And also, although this year it went down, the request, a level funded it, the funding request for Coast, because they provide a big service to the town. But generally, I've level funded everybody year-to-year.
I personally would almost like to see a formula system where if they're giving the town a service, I certainly feel that we should be helping them, but it's just a point-blank request. We don't know if, you know, they have a huge presence in town or zero presence in town. I'd like to know more about that before we just start handing out money.
It's not a bad idea.
In addition, there was some agencies that, while there was requests, they never asked for their allocation on a yearly basis, so we've cut out a couple of them over the years.
A little more scientific, and I...
And what you had asked earlier, though, why I was shaking my head, is that I know, for instance, and I don't know which one of these agencies, is one of them that, like the police use, that I think they're out of Portsmouth, they help trouble kids. They don't necessarily help anybody in town, but they're a resource that the police department turns to maybe once a year, or once every couple of years if they have to. So I don't think all these services necessarily are performed in town for town people.
The other thing is, are there services that we're not providing money to that, you know what I'm saying, that maybe realigning this whole thing wouldn't be a bad idea?
Yeah. It's a good time to look at it. I mean, it's something that probably, I know when I was on the council, something that was always been done, and it was probably when everybody else got on here, was something that's always in the system, and nobody ever really asked a lot of questions about the funding levels and the appropriateness of them, or whatever. Counsel Bentley?
So these are numbers of the bottom six here of what local towns get?
What they give in their budget to...
What do we give? I don't have...
Our budget this year is $47,000.
Yeah, $46,500.
$46,000, so.
Thank you.
Which is interesting, because these numbers are all over the place. Some of the, a couple of towns I thought would be really high or low, but, all right, as far as the bottom-line budget goes...
The council should adopt two motions. First, or you can adopt, I suggest two motions. First, at the general fund total of $229,613.
A reduction of that much?
Yes, from the current year. And then after that would be a motion on the grand total.
Okay. Mike, before I get to you, John, are you, got a question?
I just, yeah, I'm not for the motion, because Counsel Zink isn't here. Who's going to give me an update on? I brought up, and I'm still very adamant about, that library budget, and he's the one who can do it, and he was going to, I don't know if they've had a meeting since last week and now, but, again, as the rookie here, I'm not sure what happens after we do this, if, because still we touch, but there was specifically some of the lines, like one was $40,000 for new books. And again, we're all trying to do the fiscal, and, you know, maybe we don't get as many books and CDs, maybe it's $30,000 this year, but to leave that untouched, and look at every other, every other area, and, you know, obviously Counsel Zink's not going to say anything, but I just want to say it again, that I think that that area needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I don't think the budget committee has met, I know the budget committee hasn't met on our budget, so they haven't seen that yet, so I'm quite sure there's no feedback yet. They are going to meet next Saturday, the 12th, and obviously, I expect Counsel Zink will be there. I'm going to be there, I think Counsel La Branch will be there to answer any questions that the budget committee may have, and if you guys want to come, feel free, but, I mean, I don't think there's any need for the whole council to be there, because it's a, we should be able to answer any questions they have. Counsel La Branch?
You ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the budget as amended this evening with the final reduction of $229,613 by the council.
Second.
Can I ask for a quick amendment to that?
Certainly.
Reduction from last year's budget?
No re...
Last year, last year's general fund budget.
General fund budget. You said a reduction of 229,000.
Current, current...
Right, I'm sorry, yes, a reduction, yes, that's a reduction from fiscal year 11.
Yes, okay.
Just for clarity.
Still second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to...
And then with the, with the bottom line, which is 246, 141.
What's the total budget?
The total, number-wise?
Yeah. I think that's what we want to...
Right. That's, I think, what I would want to make a motion.
Yep, yep. Hang on a second.
9649110.
Say that again?
9649110.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel La Branch?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend a fiscal year 2012 budget of $9,649,110.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? So, Ed, that is $229,000 less than last year's?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, now we need to talk about potential warrant articles?
If we could, I'd like to recommend that we hold that off until the meeting with the, on the council's meeting on Wednesday, because we have the folks from Underwood who will be making a presentation on the plant and their findings, and also, Robson Mar will be in to talk about the hydro, which there are two warrant articles, one dealing with a potential funding for the wastewater upgrade, and another for the dam repairs that could have an impact on what the council may do. We'd still be able to get the warrant articles to the budget committee.
But we're going to need to make a decision then Wednesday night on the warrants.
Yes, what to recommend and not recommend.
So we have it to the budget committee by Saturday?
Yes.
Counsel La Branch?
I'd like to just suggest that maybe, it's my understanding that the budget committee will receive the new numbers this Friday, is that correct?
Yes.
Perhaps make sure that in the packet, there is a copy of these warrant articles, so that they've got them in time, even though we will not have a recommend and not recommend at this point until we meet on Wednesday.
We can do that, and we also will make sure that we have revenues for them to review.
Is that tonight?
No.
It was actually supposed to be last night's...
It was in the, yeah, it was in your package, yeah.
All right, so I see general agreement that we're going to talk about the warrants next Wednesday night. Anything else? All right.
Who is coming to sleep on the dam?
A gentleman by the name of Robson Mar.
Is that the one that was here that...
Yes.
Good, excellent.
Counsel Bergeron?
I think I'd be remiss in not mentioning one thing. Counsel Bentley, the library, in my opinion, is a very heavily-used resource in this town, especially during this economy. And I would be hesitant to cut their budget at this point, only because, you know, I walk in there, you know, I can see that buildings being heavily-used at any and all times that I've been in there. And typically, you know, they, I think they struggle to keep up trying to keep that building filled with books and resources for people that are trying to, whatever they're doing in there, maybe studying for school, or looking for a job, or just reading the paper, but, you know, I'm a big supporter of the library, and I'd hate to see anything happen that would impact their ability to service the community.
I don't know if, I don't remember whether you were here or not, Jim, but the council, we cannot change their budget?
I agree with that, but I guess I just wanted to put a plug in, and I...
Yeah. And I don't think Counsel Bentley, you know, to be fair to everybody, I don't think Counsel Bentley was saying we should cut their budget. I think he wants, he just wants to get an explanation of why they have so much money in that, and hopefully their explanation will satisfy everybody. I mean, I think that's, Counsel Bentley, is my speaking correctly what your position is? Go ahead.
Yeah, my kids go, my wife goes a lot, I've gone a few times. So that's, you know, I was never talking about salaries or hours of operation, just some of the periodicals was five grand. I said, okay, well, maybe they need all the newspapers, and new books was 40 grand, and she explained it. And it was just something, you know, that maybe there's, maybe you don't get quite as many this year as you would, and hopefully things are better next year. It's absolutely, you know, I'm glad you said so, it's absolutely a great resource, and just something that needs to be looked at, like we looked at, I think, everything, long and hard, but...
And I agree, I think looking at it is certainly, we should be looking at everything. We shouldn't just go by everybody's word on anything. We should be looking at, well, and I agree, but I still just want to mention, I do firmly support the library and everything they're doing.
Absolutely.
I wish they could do more.
Yeah, I don't think anybody disputes that, that the library is a great resource, especially for the less privileged people that maybe don't have internet at home or computers at home, they can get in there and do research and read and things like that. I think it's a, it's a great resource, so. All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Do you want to mention next week's meeting, where it's enough?
Oh, yeah, all right, for the, good point. For the record, we're going to have, our meeting that was postponed last night is going to be next Wednesday, February 12th, at 7:00. With the same...
February 9th.
February 9th, 12th?
February 9th. Oh, the 12th is a Saturday for that budget thing. Okay, February 9th.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Motion being, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
See you next week.